Esteemed colleagues, I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Joint Committee of the City Council and School Committee. Today, as you well know, is Thursday, August fourteenth, and it is now the appointed hour at six thirty in the evening. I'll just record those members present from the City Council. Yours truly, Kevin Jordan is with us. I see to my left is City Councilor Howard Graney. Also to my left and to my right is our City Council President, Tessa Murphy-Rombeletti. Not a member of the committee, but I also see and more than welcome online, we have Councilor Patty Devine is with us from the City Council. And in the chambers, we have, to my right, Councilor Carmen Acasio from Ward Two. To my left is City Councilor David Bartley from Ward Three. And Councilor Cocaine Givner from Ward Four is here in the building somewhere. She was, she'll be with us. From, uh, I'm sorry. I haven't gotten the school committee yet.
He's getting there.
We're getting there. We're working up to school committee. All right. And our esteemed school committee members, starting to my left is the school committee man from Ward Five, Jay Willihen. I see to my right from Ward Six is school committee member Ron Collimore. And also to my right is from, hailing from Ward Two is City Councilor Rosalie Tensley-Williams. In the audience, we have with us from the school committee from Ward Four, Mr. Orlando Esaza. Welcome. And is that all our school committee members? Okay, hopefully we got everybody good. So without further ado, I'd like to call this meeting to order. And up first on the agenda, we have the minutes of our February twelfth, twenty twenty-five meeting.
Move to take number one off the table, please.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. A motion to receive and adopt would be in order on the minutes. Is there a motion for that?
So moved.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded to receive the minutes and adopt them. Any discussion or edits? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Move to take item number two off the table.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to take item two off the table. Item number two is a order filed by Councilors Bartley and Vagan, filed November nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, that the City Council consider installation of flashing crosswalk signals at the two crosswalks proximate to Metcalf. That this order be referred to the mayor, DPW, city engineer, receiver, as well as the joint committee. It came before this committee last on February twelfth. It was tabled and we've been getting updates on it. All in favor of taking this item now up?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So moved. Okay, great. So I do have a report from the city engineer, Matthew Sokop, relative to this order, and then I'll open it up for discussion. He states to the committee, "We are working with Mass DOT's Vulnerable Road User Program, which has identified one location for a RFRFB," whatever that is, "to be installed at two oh four four North Hampton Street. Their consultant is finalizing plans based on our feedback and indicated that the plans will be available in late August." I'll open it up to the maker of the order, Mr. Bartley.
Where is two oh four four North Hampton Street?
Uh, two oh four four?
Yeah.
Presumably that's Metcalf?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think so because my office is at twenty twenty North Hampton Street. So I find it hard to believe there's an even number for, for Metcalf.
Okay.
So.
Is it maybe they're using the sidewalk in front of the house that, um, one at the corner of Myrtle and North Hampton Street? Would that be? No. Because the numbers get bigger going towards Kmart, right? So couldn't be that one. There is a crosswalk there. Oh, okay.
Well, anyway, Kev.
Interesting.
Right before, a block before.
A block before, like, uh, Washington and North Hampton.
Okay, so that's the second crosswalk that the City Council ordained pursuant to requests from the school committee five years ago. The, the comments we got from the former at-large council were outrageous, but we nevertheless got them through. And, and so we see about that, there is a sign there now for motorists. So I, I know that the superintendent's here. So, so there are two things, and I hope everybody's aware of this. The, the crosswalk that's proximate to the Dam Cafe, the one that we most commonly associate with Metcalf, which is now the Opportunity Academy, is not patrolled by crossing guards with, with, I assume you all know this. It's not, there are no crossing guards there with, with the orange vests, right? You all know that, right? It's monitored by Metcalf staff, teachers. Is that the way you do business? Is that the way we do business for the kids crossing the street? That's the only school I know. And this has been brought before the school committee and the administration before, multiple times by me, but not for a while. But now we're all here and we all know. So it's monitored by, monitored by teachers and staff, not by crossing guards. Okay? And then so, so, and the other crosswalk is not monitored whatsoever. There's not even a sign that's placed in the crosswalk anymore to, to, to give motorists a heads up that, that there are pedestrians in the crosswalk, like we see at other places. Now, there was one there for a while, but it got wiped out a few times and then it just wasn't replaced this year. Hasn't been replaced for a couple of years. So that's the, that's the way it looks on the ground at the moment. So there are two crosswalks. We put in the second one at the specific bequest of the school committee. It is not monitored and there is no sign in the middle of the crosswalk for, for motorists. The main crosswalk is monitored during school bus times, not by a crossing guard, but by school staff. Now, if that's the best way to do it, then that, then so be it. I'm just a city councilor. I don't know anything. But that's not what I see at other schools. So the, the thinking here is that hopefully we, we can get one signal in at, at the main, at the main crosswalk, which is the one proximate to the PBT bus stop and the Dam Cafe, if you will. So that would be the northernmost crosswalk, if you had to be technical about it. So, so that's really, that's really it. We're just, we're just looking for input on that. And, and now we got the last thing, Mr. Chair. Is the Opportunity Academy now? I'm unclear as to the volume of cars and buses. I'm grateful that they're there. I think it's, it's just a wonderful, gonna be a wonderful addition to the neighborhood. It's gonna remain a school. And, and I'm so grateful at the school building committee and all that, which I was lucky to be a part of. Thanks to you, thanks to Tessa, and chose that. And the great job, everybody. So it's gonna be a, a real positive, not even a change, but a real positive, uh, new situation at Metcalf. So let's, I guess we should see how that goes, but I'd like to get something in place sooner rather than later for, for our students and our, our teachers. Thank you.
Sure. Before I recognize Ms. Williams, I did want to also acknowledge that our superintendent is here, Anthony Soto. You're welcome, by the way. Please come in, have a seat. The microphone, you're a key stakeholder, and I also want to thank you for always attending these meetings. Aaron Linville is also here, one of the senior leaders in the school department. So you too, Aaron, are, by all means, please welcome. So thank you both for coming. Rosalie, you have the phone.
Mr. Bartley, the question that I have is, was there not enough money to pay a crossing guard? Was there a problem as far as finances?
Yeah, that would be for the HPS department to let me know on that one. I would, I don't want to be speculating.
Because we need to know.
Jay, you want to take? Jay?
I don't, I don't have the answer to that question.
Oh, okay. I'm asking it.
Ward Five, we, we sort of had the opposite situation there a couple of years ago. We, we had a crossing guard that was on Keane Road and Noah's Circle for many years, but we didn't have, so the guard was there, but we didn't have the crosswalk. Okay? So it was the opposite. So, and the, because there was no crosswalk, a lot of the cars going up didn't acknowledge the crossing guard. So that was an issue. They were speeding up. So myself and Linda Vagan, the Ward Five City Councilor, we had to go, kind of jump through hoops with the city engineer and DPW to get the crosswalk installed. They actually put a raised crosswalk there. So it took a little while to get that in there, but we were happy with, with the outcome.
So it was dangerous then?
Yes, it was.
Okay, no crosswalk, so no one got hurt, I hope so. Thank you, Jay.
Mr. Graney?
Uh, yes. Quickly, would you reread, please, the correspondence you've got on DPW?
From Matthew Sokop. "We are working with Mass DOT's Vulnerable Road User Program, which has identified one location for a RRFB to be installed at two oh four four North Hampton Street. Their consultant is finalizing the plans based on our feedback and indicated that the plans will be available in late August."
Just a comment on that. I don't know, maybe Superintendent Soto, maybe one of you can answer, because I'm curious right now, what's an RRFB? I have no clue what that is. I don't know what we're dealing with here until we know what an RRFB is.
Yep.
I mean, we can't, I mean.
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
I've put one on the screen for you. It's a rectangular rapid flashing beacon.
Oh, all right. Give that, what was, what's, what's the name again?
A rectangular rapid flashing beacon.
Oh.
RRFB, how do you not know that?
Flashing. You learn something new every day, right?
And to follow up on that, please.
Yes, Mr. Graney?
To follow up on that, and the DOT, if we have no, no response from the DOT, maybe we could notify our, our state representative and state senator, maybe they could push this a little further up, because this is important. Schools are gonna be opening in three, what, three weeks? Two weeks? Two to three weeks? I mean, these are things, these are things that we need to get done. And the more, the more people we push for this, the better off we're gonna be. Thank you.
Yeah, and we have been asking since November. Anthony, could you just address the point about the crossing guard and how children are getting across North Hampton Street now? Is it possible to? Is that true, number one, that it's the staff there that are doing?
Yeah, I mean, sometimes it's the principal. They have a rotating, rotating schedule based on, you know, all people have, you know, before-school and after-school duties. And the principal herself has been out there with a vest and with a stop sign.
Is, now, would you find that a little unusual, that the principal has to cross the kids across the street? Or could we get a crossing guard? Is it that we're short? Or what's the logic behind that?
Yeah, I mean, first of all, that's not, that hasn't been a designated crossing guard post.
Okay.
So we work with the, the police department to take a look, you know, they have traffic information.
Yep.
And then we have information about how many students we actually have walking, what age they are. And Metcalf typically doesn't, didn't have a lot of walkers in the past. They, a lot of the kids that were attending Metcalf take the bus. So with, with the, with the number of students that we actually have walking as opposed to getting dropped off and on buses, at the time, they, they analyzed where crossing guard posts should be. That wasn't an area where, where they thought they should be. I will say that since the pandemic, it's been a very challenging time to find people that are willing to work, you know, two and a half hours a day, one hour in the morning and one hour in the, in the, at dismissal. So the, the police department helps us with hiring, and I know that we, you know, even with the posts that we currently have, they've had a hard time filling those positions.
Okay. Have you had any complaints from parents about your current arrangement at all, or?
Occasionally, mainly about people violating, you know, speed zones and people violating traffic laws, like, so whenever, you know.
That's our next, that's item three coming up.
I have had complaints about people speeding, you know. We don't, you know, no one at the school department, you know, regulates people, you know, people's driving. We try to make sure that in the front of the buildings, we have staff readily available. I know that Councilor Givner is actually on a, some sort of subcommittee around safe driving and pedestrian. And I'm hopeful that, you know, as, whatever work that committee is doing, that they have some really good recommendations on what they'd like to see in front of schools and, and how we can, you know, work collaboratively and work together to, to enforce safe and distraction-free driving.
Um, let's see. There was one other item I wanted to mention relative to this was, um.
But I, so you did ask a question, is that typical? I, I have seen in other communities where staff, they don't go do posts across the city, but some, you know, Springfield is an example, a district that I used to work in. They, they actually have staff do crossing guard duty around their schools as well. It's usually the custodians that do that at, you know, at an overtime rate. So they, they've worked it out so that, you know, if you have an eight-hour shift, you come in early and you work an extra hour, you still have to work your eight-hour shift, but you work an extra hour to do some crossing guard duty.
Right, extra.
But the posts are usually located right around the school. They don't go, you know, as an example, like Resnick Boulevard is, is one of those areas that has a designated crossing guard. Custodian wouldn't, you know, in Springfield, the custodian or a staff member wouldn't walk that far to do it. It would just be in the immediate vicinity of the school.
I remembered what my question was. Opportunity Academy, average age of the kids there?
High school.
High school age?
Yeah.
Okay. So, you know, obviously not the same as an elementary school, right? So, um, hopefully that will help with the potential for risk there too, you know, because they're older, older kids.
And they're on a different schedule too, so like, you know, their programming starts a little bit after rush hour.
Right.
And it varies from day to day. So I, I really don't anticipate a huge, like, traffic backlog.
Okay.
Because of the Opportunity Academy program, but we'll continue to closely monitor that.
Is it gonna be just Opportunity Academy in there?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. How many kids, by the way, are you expecting approximately in that?
Um, I mean, in the program, there's probably a couple hundred kids, but on, on any given day, you're looking at like thirty, forty kids.
Okay.
Sometimes sixty, depending on the day.
And we've discussed.
A lot of that is independent work that they're doing and, and project-based work to, to attain credits. So their schedules vary.
Very good. Uh, Mr. Collimore?
What?
Just speaking to the mic for our friends at home.
Yeah. What crossing guard is there? Not cross, not crossing guard, but street crossings? Are we talking the one by?
Dam Cafe would be an example, the one by Myrtle. Myrtle, Myrtle and North Hampton Street? There's one across there.
Myrtle and North Hampton, not, not down farther by Barry Farrell's.
Correct.
So there'd be just one we're talking about?
I think that's, is that the plan, David?
That would, that, to me, that, Mr. Chair, that'd be the preference, to have it proximate to where the crosswalk is. It's situated between the old Blessed Sacrament, which is now the, the Pentecostal Church, and the Opportunity Academy. That, that's the one that's primarily used. So if the RRFB went there, that would be, I think, ideal.
Okay.
This company that is hired to do this, they're consulting with our people?
Our city engineer, that was a report from him, yes. He's, he's working with them on it.
Not, no one from the school department?
I don't believe so directly. Correct me if you're wrong, but we believe this, Mr. Sokop is working directly with Mass DOT on this issue.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. So unless there's other dis-
On the table?
Yeah, probably would be a good idea if we keep it tabled and then have the update when it's hopefully installed by the time we meet again. Does that make sense?
Yeah, move to keep it on the table.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. All right.
Move to take item three off the table.
Motion made and seconded to take item three off the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number three is, let me just read this here, is a communication from Christina Schilling dated May twentieth, twenty twenty-five. She sent us an email regarding speeding in school zones. It's in your packets. Uh, let's see here. I'll do my best to summarize. She had sent this to me directly, along with a couple other counselors, and I had asked that this be forwarded for the benefit of everybody and added to the agenda. So I'll summarize the letter. She lives on West Franklin Street. She's a mom with kids in the Hoyle Public Schools. She's very concerned, in particular, about dangerous speeding of cars at school drop-off and pickup. Specifically, she mentions Kelly School. "I'm sure you all remember when a student was struck last year. I am forwarding a copy of the email sent to the mayor and superintendent in light of that incident. Specifically, they ensured that the Hoyle Police is also taking additional steps to support pedestrian safety during school hours. Police cars will be stationed in proximity to the following schools." And then there's a whole list of public schools here. "With their blue lights turned on to encourage driver vigilance at these locations." She states in her email that there has never been a cruiser at Kelly School during drop-off or pickup. She says she also goes by Lawrence School every day on her way to drop off her son, and there has never been a cruiser there either. She says, "I cannot speak for other schools, but do you have any insight into whether or not this initiative can be revisited?" So essentially what she's saying is, um, that the Hoyle Public Schools essentially made certain representations last October, that these things were gonna take place, and it's her surmising that they haven't occurred. And she wants the council to look into this and this committee, which I forwarded to since you'll all be here, and I figured this would be the perfect venue to talk about this parent's concerns. So, um, without further ado, I'm happy to, oh, yeah, please, Tessa.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did, I wanted to mention that after we got this email, I did reach out to Mr. Soto. And he provided me with, I'm sure this is probably, you'll go into depth a little, maybe a little bit more, but there were school zone safety recommendations that were provided to the mayor. And around the time that I was reaching out, I did reach out to the police chief as well. He was newer at the time, but I think this is a good opportunity to just revisit some of those recommendations. So I thank our receiver for, our superintendent, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Superintendent.
It's August. For, you know, just having this as something you're thinking of, and I'd love to hear more. So thank you for putting it on the agenda.
Perfect, and thank you for that background. So Anthony, tee it up to you. I think you get the gist, and hopefully you've received this communication from the parent. Give us your perspective on what was promised, what the schools are doing. Is this accurate about the initiative to have police presence? Maybe talk about that incident that did occur, maybe what happened there? And then where are we with this, these school safety and driving around the schools issue? If you could touch on that for us, please.
Yeah, so part of, you know, our principals actually just met. They came back for a few days of professional development, and many of them have been planning all year. But one of the plans that they have to put together and collaborate with staff on is like entry and dismissal procedures. How are we gonna make sure, like, we have procedures in place to try to maintain to the best of our ability, safety in our parking lots when kids are getting dropped off? If all of those, you know, if, I'm just gonna keep it real, like, if, if everybody followed the law and, and like followed direction, you know, kids would be really safe. When kids are not safe, when, you know, a family member may be impatient and we're telling them, they gotta go in this entrance, and they ignore directives and go in another entrance, that's when things get a little unsafe. But back when this happened, I worked collaboratively with the, the mayor to evaluate all of our walk pedestrian infrastructure around our schools. And, you know, Sean Shidi, actually, everybody knows Sean Shidi. He drove around the city, drove to every single one of our schools, checked all of like the crosswalk buttons. He checked and, and made recommendations. So I had created a report that I provided to the mayor, like, based on our analysis and based on what we saw in all of our schools, here are some recommendations that we would provide the city to do, to make it just a little bit safer. And one of the things that the mayor was able to do is work with the police chief, the then-police chief at the time, to ask them, hey, you know, in light of what happened, is there anything that, that you guys can do to, to, because, you know, we're not law enforcement agents. We can't ticket people that are speeding or, you know, going around buses when there's a stop sign, like, we, you know, we don't have the ability or authority to do anything. So at that time, the mayor had asked the, the police chief if there was anything they can do. And they assured us that, you know, you know, we can, you know, we have people patrolling and we're gonna ask them to patrol those areas during those peak times. And for a couple of weeks, they actually did do that, like, they were, you know, they were kind of stationed right around where there was heavy traffic. I don't know that that was a permanent solution, you know. I, I don't know too much about whether or not that was an increase in the police department's budget or anything like that, but they definitely had a presence for a little bit, a little while. And I would agree that I haven't, I haven't seen that, like, consistently now. School year hasn't started, so I don't know if they plan on picking it up, but I could certainly touch base with the mayor and, and the police chief to see if, if they could, you know, revisit that, that process that they implemented a couple of weeks, for a couple of weeks after the incident happened, to ensure, you know, if there are people speeding through school zones or anything like that, that they're there and that they can address those issues and help with some of the clutter. First couple of days of school, we have a lot of, you know, I think that's probably the heaviest days where, you know, families like to drop off their kids, even if they have a bus stop assigned or anything like that. Usually the first day of school, we have more parent drop-off than, than any other day. So I anticipate those couple of days to be a little heavier in traffic, and then it'll go back to normal. But yeah, that's, you know, so went through all of our schools, checked our infrastructure, made some recommendations, and yes, police were there for a couple of weeks. I, I didn't see them, you know, the entire school year, and, and I could certainly revisit that conversation with the mayor.
Yeah, I would appreciate that. And I will say, in reference to that October incident, of course, one of the things that I know myself and Councilor Acasio have been working on is trying to get the traffic light put back at Vernon and Main Street. And we continue to say that that's a long, that light had been there for a reason, to slow the traffic on Main Street down. So, you know, every bit helps, and those traffic controls are really important, and I'll continue to reiterate, we need to put that traffic light back. And I'm seeing other traffic lights going up in town, and if we have money for those, we should have money for this traffic light. So, and I already said, we'll find the money. You bring me a transfer and we'll approve it, okay? It's my opinion. I would be shocked if the council would not vote to put that back. That was strongly advocated for by the residents of Springdale, and there was a lot of discussion about that at the time. And they would very much like to have that light back, because it's also one of their own- 'cause it's also one of their only ways to safely come out of their streets onto Main Street. So without further ado, uh, Howie.
Just, just quickly to reiterate what, uh, Councilor Jordan said, uh, the city council voted unanimously to, to replace that, that stoplight at Vernon Street, I don't know, approximately four months ago. And I don't think we've heard anything about that, but that was a unanimous vote to replace that stoplight. Uh, I think it went to ordinance and it went to the DPW. I'm not sure of that, but I think that's where it went. Maybe the, uh, president of the, uh, city council could, uh, uh, comment on that. And secondly, uh, Superintendent Soto, how about the entrances to the buildings? Are they all secure, the entrances and exits? In other words, when you go into Hoyokai School, you have to press that button, and somebody has to let, push that button to allow somebody to enter the school? These days, we wanna make sure we know everybody who's coming in and out of those buildings.
Yeah, as kids are arriving, there's usually staff at the door and the doors are open. But once school's in session and that heavy inflow of, you know, getting students and staff into the building is, um, then the only way to get into the building is to push a buzzer, and then they buzz you in. At, uh, many of our schools, we have, uh, safety vestibules, so that when you do get buzzed in, you're, you're, you don't have a free access to the, the whole school. You're actually still kinda confined to one space. They have to buzz you in again to get you into the main office, and then you have access to the school once they release you from there. Uh, we have that infrastructure in place at the New Peck, uh, we have it at Sullivan, we have it at Morgan. Um, we have it at, uh, both high schools. So at, at the middle and high schools is where we have that, and some of our elementary schools have it. Others have a direct line of sight to who's asking to come into the building, and they get buzzed in. Um, we don't have safety vestibules at every school, but, uh, if you're getting buzzed in, it's usually because you've stated who you are and what you're, why you're there, or the, the front office staff know who, who it is that, um, is trying to get into the building.
Thank you.
You know, uh, I think some areas that, particularly in schools like Hoyokai, really, really big schools that have so many doors, um, I think the, the main concern is when, you know, staff or students like prop a door open to go to their car or, uh, to let a friend in. Uh, but that's, that usually doesn't happen at the front entrance, because, you know, there's, it's heavily, there's a big presence there and they, you know, people would get in trouble.
Is there any device if one of those doors opens that, uh, the front office is contacted or?
We have cameras.
And when I was at Hoyokai School, if somebody ran out the gym door, you know, and that door was open, there was really not too much you could do about it if somebody was gonna walk in there.
We have cameras that are SRO monitors, and they're at all of those locations.
Good.
Um, but we don't have, like, alarms set up, so that if a door opens and alarm goes off, we don't have that in, in all of our schools. But, uh, Hoyokai has like over a hundred cam- I would, maybe I'm exaggerating a little bit, but they have a ton of cameras and, um, our SRO there regularly monitors them, um.
Okay, thank you.
Jay.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, just to follow up on what, um, uh, Superintendent Soto said regarding the pickup and the drop-off times, um, there's, um, two schools in my district and my ward. My ward, we have McMahon and Dunnehew, and I know those times are challenging with, um, the parents picking up their kids and dropping off the kids. Um, just to follow up again what, uh, Mr. Soto said. I hear stories about the parents violating the protocol and the rules. It's not the speeding cars in the public, it's the parents. They're parking in designated areas that say no parking. They move cones out of the way that are there for a reason. They move those out to put their car in. So again, it's, uh, it's not just the speeders, as this email says, it's the parents that aren't complying with a lot of the rules and, uh, and, uh, protocols.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so I just wanted to get back a little to the, the speed problem, and, um, it sounds like in general, we, we need a citywide solutions for what we should ex- we can expect around all schools, you know? I mean, picking, not picking on, but picking at one or two locations doesn't really solve the overall problem. And, um, I think it's really important that we start to come up with ways and, you know, maybe through our ordinances, but by, you know, really thinking about what we expect to see in a school zone, whether that's raised crosswalks, the, the RR, RRFBs, or I don't even know if I have that acronym right.
You have it, you have it.
Um, if we expect those around all the schools, maybe we expect, um, I don't know, any number of things, uh, flashing stop signs or, you know, better painting, whatever we expect in, in our school zones, we, we really need to figure that out and, um, put it in writing and, and get that to the city council, so that whenever, you know, whenever, for example, there is a new school or something is getting redone, we expect that to happen in time for the school year to, to start. Um, that's obviously not a quick solution for what's going, what we're expecting on North Hampton Street. Um, but I am working with the Bike and Pedestrian Committee, and we're hoping to create, to, to kinda merge the Speed Management Group with, as a subcommittee of that committee. And hopefully we can really start to make, um, really useful recommendations to the city council. And so we won't have to have these separate discussions about each individual school in the city. You know, everybody who sends their kid to a school should be able to expect the same things. Um, another thing I would add is that, you know, with this speeding in the city, we, we know that we have an enforcement problem, and we've continued to keep that on, um, the HPD's radar. The police chief is, is doing his best to work with us, you know? He knows that our ordinances require speed mitigation and a traffic patrol. So, um, I know that he is doing his best to make that happen. Um, there are some campaigns going on in the city. There's a four-month campaign right now for distracted driving. That's, um, gonna collect a lot of speed data throughout the city, and that, all that information will be turned over to HPD when the campaign ends in November. Um, so there are some things happening. Um, unfortunately, everybody doesn't know about everything happening, but I will do my best to try to get more information out there. But I think at least if we can collect the data and start to make better plans, maybe this time next year, we'll be having different conversations about all the things that are in the works and that are a little more consistent throughout the city.
Thank you. Ron?
Yeah, I'd like to move at this time to keep this on the table until such time, as we hear from the mayor and the chief of police.
Yep, I think that makes, uh, I think that makes a lot of sense. And to the point that Councilor Givner was pointing out, is it possible, I remember, um, I think it was Sean Sheedy who did the, um, it was sort of like a report card on each of the schools, um, in terms of the physical state, and he rated it on a lot of these different metrics, whether... Yeah, thank you, the heat map. Could we, could the schools consider doing something like that on safety issues like these, whether it's, you know, crosswalks, um, whatever your needs are? Is it door security? Is it more cameras? Is it any of these type of issues? If there could be an evaluation of some form, I think that would be extremely helpful to the school committee, and then back to the joint committee. And then obviously, if it's a resource issue, is it, does this require an ordinance change? Is it a question of more dollars? Is it a question of police priorities? Is it, you know, how are we addressing those? And I'd, it'd be helpful to have some sort of evaluation i- if that could be done. Is, is that something that perhaps, uh, the school leadership could put together over, say, the next three or four months?
I mean, we, we did provide that, like, we, we did provide a report to the mayor on, like, safety infrastructure as it relates to pedestrians. Um...
Okay. Could you share that with us?
I would, I would, uh, I think one of the things that is a little challenging, or not challenging, I just wanna, you know, as you all know, we, we, we turn to local control July one, right? So in the past, this subcommittee and any subcommittee can just charge me to do something, and I can just go do it. But, um, I just wanna be, I wanna respect the school committee's, uh, you know, authority. And like, if there is a recommendation as one that you had created, um, I think that it's appropriate for that recommendation to go to the school committee, and then they can charge, charge me with whatever, you know, it is that they want me to do. Given, it's a little different. We haven't operated that way in, in many, many years. But, um, you know, we're, we're in local control now, and, you know, the, the school committee's my boss. So I gotta make sure that, you know, um, that whenever a recommendation is coming out of a subcommittee, that it goes through them.
Yeah. Well, obviously, you see, the membership of the room is here, um, and hopefully they'll be voting for that. Uh, Jay?
Yeah, I mean, um, we can just, um...
Bring it up at one of your meetings?
Make the order, and we can bring it up at a future, uh, full, uh...
School committee meeting.
Committee meeting, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that sounds good. Yeah, okay. All right. So, um, I think we'll table this, but with the request, uh, of the school committee to, uh, file a request for a security analysis, is that? Sa- safety slash security analysis? Does that sound good? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed, so moved. All right.
We'll take item four off the table.
Okay. Sure. Order. Okay. Motion is to suspend the rules to go to item eleven.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, so moved. Okay, item number eleven. Yep, no problem. Item number eleven is an order that was introduced by Councilor Bartley on August fifth, twenty twenty-five, that the Hoya Public Schools add signage to the west side of the William Peck School stating the school's name. This item be referred to the joint committee. Um, all in favor of taking this item up?
Aye.
Closed, so moved. And let me just get that communication in front of me. Here we go. Um, that item is now before us. Uh, Mr. Bartley, I think the order kinda speaks for itself, but, uh...
Well, it does, Anz, thank you, uh...
Yeah, sure.
Mr. Chair, so we...
How do we operationalize that?
It, it was, it was never there until, uh, for as long as Peck School was in place. And then, uh, when I first got into office, uh, there were several, um, uh, delivery trucks that kept getting lost, and they didn't know where the school was. So we put up signage at McIntosh Terrace and Russell Terrace, little arrows saying, "Peck School, this way," and still that didn't do the trick. Then I did ask that large Councilor Moriarty to, to ask the superintendent, uh, what do you think about putting the, the name on the west side of the building? And Mike thought it was a good idea, and so ultimately, the, the school board thought it was a good idea, and it was, there it was. So I'd like to see if something similar could, could happen on the, the side that faces, uh, Crozier School. It would be, uh, A, it would be nice advertising, and B, it would really help orient particularly motorists and dr- delivery drivers to get there. So that's the reason. Thank you.
I, I believe we have assigned a big Dr. William R. Peck sign on that side of the building now.
Sort of where the old gymnasium was, to the old building.
Well, I didn't, as of yesterday, it wasn't there, but maybe, maybe it's...
Is that coming, or?
I think we added it late, and I'm texting with our owner's project manager right now. So in a couple of minutes, I should be able to have a response.
Okay. There is a, like, if it's not already on the building, like, I have given them the directive to put a sign on that side of the building. They've included it in the scope of the project.
Okay.
The one thing that, um, the one thing that couldn't happen was to make it a, a, a sign that is lit up. So like, you know, normally when you see a sign on a school, there's, there's nice uplighting or downlighting. It's not gonna be one of those signs. It's just gonna say Dr. William R. Peck, um, on that side of the building on the North Hampton Street side.
Can I get neon?
Well, you'd have to come in for a variance for that, right? So...
We did have to go back to the, what, the delay is because we had to go back to the planning board, because we hadn't planned on it, but Superintendent Soto did request it. So it's been approved, ordered, but it hasn't been installed yet, and we don't know the exact date of delivery and installation. But it's a great suggestion, and, um...
Beautiful. Coming attraction.
Yeah.
Beautiful. All right, thank you, everybody.
If I get a date, I'll let, um, Superintendent Soto know.
Perfect. So it sounds like the order's been complied with, right? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dave.
This committee has a lot of power.
Wow, look at that. You're just getting signs up left and right. Oh, my God.
I'm impressed.
Uh, all, all in favor of this order being complied with?
Aye.
Hey, have a good evening, Dave. All right, now we go back to item four. All right, motion has been made in second to take them four off the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, so moved. Okay, so item number four, uh, comes by way of yours truly on March eighteenth. Um, the Budget Development for FY twenty-six Budget Advisory Group had, um, reported out with the assistance of Sean Mangano, who I do wanna recognize is also online, who oversees finances for the Hoya Public Schools. This was the Budget Advisory Report, uh, from the School Budget Advisory Group that was meeting. I think we had three, three meetings over a period of three months. And, um, I just wanted to, one, uh, make sure everybody saw this. Uh, I'll open it up to Sean or Jay, um, for, in my own regard, um, as some of the people who sat on this committee, um, some of the takeaways. One that I certainly thought that was interesting was how much money spent on special education slash, uh, other folks from out of town type of busing. And that, a couple of my takeaways was, it wasn't that bad of a price for the regular non-special education and other kids from out of town. The school busing costs, like, it was, you know, a reasonable amount of money, you know, like, kinda what I would expect. Then I was just blown away by the actual cost of special ed busing and the busing for, um, I guess, at lack of a better word, at-risk youth or kids con- or displaced kids sort of coming from, uh, other communities or otherwise, um, and to the tune of, like, that portion of it for not a lot of kids is like seven million dollars, uh, plus. It was, it was extreme, 'cause like the overall bill was like nine point two, nine point three million. So it was like two million for what we traditionally think of as the school buses, and then it was like seven million for not a lot of kids. Like, it was like more than three X the cost, and it just blew my mind to the point where it was almost on the order of about twelve or thirteen thousand dollars a student to just bring them to school. And I was like, wow. I mean, it was almost to the point where every two years, you could almost buy these kids a brand-new car, um, type of expense. And the question is, and one of the takeaways from the committee was, is there other ways of doing this? Is there, you know, to reduce these costs? Is it, we could do this in-house as opposed to contracting out? Um, we've gotta get, and the city pays all these costs, right? These are not coming out of state appropriation funds. Like, this is coming out of the city's nickel. And for a city that's as cash-strapped as we are and as tight on a budget as we are, you know, a seven point three million dollar bill is a lot of money. And we've gotta figure out if there's a way that there's some savings or economies of scale or doing things differently, um, could be done. So I think one of my takeaways from my participation in the group is, we would continue to appreciate school leadership, um, continuing to monitor this, continuing to think of new and innovative ways to do it. Is there ways to partner with other communities to develop? Maybe Springfield has a lot of, at a larger scale, but a similar issues that we're also dealing with. Is there ways that we could get on some maybe bigger contract to, to address these students so that there's maybe a lower unit cost? 'Cause even if we got from twelve thousand a kid to ten thousand a kid, just goes to show the sense of the cost of education when we're not even educating anybody yet. Just to even get them to the building is twelve grand a kid per school year. I mean, that's an enormous sum of money just for transportation. So, um, that was very eye-opening to me. That, I was kinda blown away, um, by that sum of money. Um, I'll stop there as far as my takeaways, um, but there's a lot... Um, I'll stop there as far as my takeaways, um, but there's a lot of good stuff I really enjoyed. Thank you to our president for appointing me to be the council's representative on the committee. Um, it's, you know, it, we've got to watch every penny and, uh, that we can. And, uh, I really enjoyed my participation and, uh, we had, I thought, a really good group. And I thought Sean provided good leadership, uh, overall. And, uh, this was helpful to the preparation of the FY twenty-six budget. So I'll recognize, uh, Jay and then Sean, if he would like to make any comments. Jay?
Thank you. Um, yeah, just to follow up on what Counselor Jordan said. You know, it's a eye-opening, um, statistic with the, with the, um, amount of money that we spend on transportation. It comes up, we have our monthly finance meetings and that topic comes up every month. We talk about that. We're behind schedule. We're behind the eight ball on that issue. It's hard to get ahead of it. Um, you know, the, the formula is really broke, in my opinion. Um, just on the services that we're obligated to provide, that's fine. But just, you know, the transportation costs are escalating, reimbursements from the state are lagging. Um, those numbers don't seem to be, they tend to be going away from each other. The services we're providing and the money coming in are, are going, uh, away from each other. So it's, it's a number that we're trying to get a handle on. I know we have a, um, hired a consultant to look at our transportation, um, routes. Uh, I'll, I'll, I'll let Mr. Mr. Soto talk more about that, uh, just to try to, we know it's an issue. Um, what we can do about it, that's another factor. You know, again, we're obligated to provide transportation. Um, um, again, just to back to the budget group in general, um, I think it was well attended. It was well-developed. Our, our finance director did a good job in terms of keeping us on point and just, um, um, making sure our, our, our budget is solid, which it is. Um, so, thank you.
Sean, did you, uh, did you have any remarks for us? I just wanted to recognize you as another one of the committee members.
Yeah, I'll just quickly say, um, thank you, uh, to Counselor Jordan and Mr. Wellahan for, uh, attending that. Um, we had a lot of reps, uh, we had a rep from the teachers' union, um, the para-union and principal, uh, participation on that group. Um, we know transportation costs are one of the biggest issues. Um, Superintendent and I have been having a lot of conversations. We've put together an internal working group, uh, to, to just explore sort of outside the box ideas, sort of like you mentioned. Um, and we are implementing some initiatives for this coming year, things that we hope will reduce costs. And we have a number of other ideas that we're going to explore more during this year that, uh, could be implemented in future years. So it's definitely something we're not, you know, we're not saying we're done with the budget and then forgetting about. Our goal is to bring transportation costs in under budget if possible, um, and return money to the town.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Graney?
Yeah, just quickly, uh, obviously this special ed situation in Hoyt has been going on for years. We've been grossly underfunded by the state for many, many years. That's not a secret. The data will, will, will back that up. Are, are we still in, under contract at Durham for our school transportation services? And if we are, how long is that contract up for?
Yeah, they have a five-year contract. We went to bid two years ago. And if you recall, um, one of the things that, that I was able to do, um, post-receivership is come to this council and request that they allow us to extend their contract for another couple of years because they had a, a three-year contract. And in order to do more than three years, we, we need special approval. And in doing so, we were able to save, you know, over a million dollars a year. And the reason I did that was because I had been looking at the transportation industry across the entire state and learning from other superintendents and CFOs that they were experiencing rate increase of, rate increases of twenty-five percent, seventeen percent. So I thought it was a, a terrible idea to be going out to bid. Um, and thankfully to all of you, you guys approved that and we were able to negotiate with them three percent increases. Once that five-year contract was up, we were obligated to go back out to bid. And went out to bid initially, um, saw a twenty-two percent increase, came back, uh, kind of scrapped the bid, uh, worked with the vendors to say like, what could we do in our bid specs to, to try to, uh, you know, garner some savings date? And we worked with a consultant. They, uh, gave us some suggestions, like there were things in the, in the request for proposal that required, you know, vehicles to be under a certain mileage, vehicles to be brand new, things like that, that affected the, the price. So we went back and, uh, adjusted our, uh, bid specs and, and were able to negotiate a rate increase, I believe of like thirteen percent. Um, and that was two years after districts had been receiving twenty percent increases and seventeen percent increases. So, um, it was, you know, all of your quick thinking and that, that, uh, allowed us to save a significant amount of money. But I knew that like, once we went out to bid, there was going to be some increase.
So five more years on the current one?
Uh, no, it was a five year. So I think we got three more years, if I'm not mistaken. Um, so we, we got two years under, under this new contract. Um, as you mentioned, uh, uh, you know, general ed transportation or big bus transportation is, you know, hasn't changed much. We've had around twenty-three buses and that's what we've had for a long time. Um, I remember my first year here, uh, it was a year where the mayor had cut the transportation budget by a million dollars. And, you know, it was like, what are we going to do? And, uh, one of the things that, you know, I had to do was really analyze all of that data. And one thing that was clear to me right away was that, you know, it's not a big bus problem. It is a mini bus and van problem. And, um, you know, we were able to, to, uh, we were able to do things that were not popular, right? And one of them is change start, school start and end times, right? Um, we get buses and we have, we basically, the rate that we're paying allows us to have a bus on two tiers. So they go drop off the kids at seven forty, they go pick up a new set of kids and then drop off those kids at the eight forty start. Um, that, that was not a popular decision, but it was a way that we were able to minimize costs. Um, so those are some strategic things that we have done. Uh, the, unfortunately, the, the, once, uh, transportation is written into a student's IEP, like, you know, that you have to provide that, let, I don't want to say unfortunately, but like, the reality is, is that these costs are what they are because we have such a, such a, uh, high population of, of students with IEPs and a significant amount of them have transportation written into their IEP. One thing we started to do this past year and, and actually for a few years now, is provide some training to schools around making sure that those decisions are related to some sort of, you know, disability. It's not just because you have, you know, if you, if you require speech services in your IEP, that doesn't necessarily mean that you, you can't ride on a, on a regular bus that you qualify for, for that level of transportation. Most recently, and I know you, I'm gonna, I'm gonna wrap this up. Most recently, as Sean mentioned, we did put together an internal team. I opened it up for any member of the council to be on and any member of the school committee to be on. Um, and we, we also hired a consultant to take a look at this stuff. And he provided us with some recommendations. Um, one of them, you know, was for us to explore doing our own routing for the vans. So we, that was another thing that I, we had done over the last few years is we used to have the bus company route. And, you know, we were able to say, you know what, we're going to do the routing. We'll give you the routes. And in that process, um, we have somebody that's gotten really good, Rebecca Lamb, who is our enrollment center director and she oversees transportation. She has become a, a master at that software and we were able to reduce a significant amount of routes. I think when she took over the routing, we had like thirty-nine mini buses and we got it down to like thirty-three. Um, just in one, in, in one year. Um, so, uh, we're going to continue to explore that. I, the, the one area we're not currently routing is our van work, which has kind of skyrocketed in costs. And our van work is for our out-of-district tuition, for, uh, for, uh, special education and kids that are in out-of-district placements and for our Mc- McKinney Vento population. So students that, um, are experiencing housing displacement. Uh, the, the, that routing has, is handled by the, the van company. And, um, we've, we've definitely most recently took a look at, you know, how they're, who they're picking up, what the van numbers are, all that stuff. And, and, you know, I think we're at a point right now where we're ready to say, you know what? We're going to take over the routing because we think we could find some efficiencies there.
Okay, just, just to, to, just to continue along that path, uh, Superintendent, the, uh, the out-of-district, uh, busing is obvious, it's mandated, it's door-to-door. I, I realize that. Uh, projected, and I know you don't have the data yet, approximately how many students are we going to be, you know, moving from the district in special ed for special services?
How many special ed riders do we have?
No, just that are going to be placed out of, out of district.
Out of district, we have about a hundred twenty kids, a hundred eighteen kids, I want to say. And, you know, that's not, those are, I, the, the classic example I like to use is the Willie Ross School for the, you know, School for the Deaf. Um, in Hoyt Public Schools, we don't have a, a program designed to educate students who are deaf or blind. Um, so we have to use a school like Willie Ross to, uh, to provide that service and meet that student's need. Um, and similarly, those hundred kids, um, we don't have programs within our portfolio that are meeting their needs, you know, either their therapeutic needs, um, or, you know, uh, physical needs. Some of, some of our students, you know, require, you know, home, like some of, have residential programs where they actually have to live at the school and be monitored, uh, overnight and all that stuff. So we don't have a program like that. So we partner with some of these out-of-district schools. Special ed teams get together and decide what the appropriate placement is for that kid, for, for that particular student, given, given, um, the nature of, of the disability. So we are, you know, it is something that we continue to look at, you know, we, uh, it, it's not easy to, uh, you know, I think there was a time where, uh, where, where controls weren't necessarily tight in terms of sending students out of district. But we have definitely gotten a lot better at making sure that if we are making a decision to send a student out of district, it's because we don't have programs to meet their needs. And this other school might have a program that would better meet their needs. We've really tightened that up so that when we are making that decision, it's a much more conscious decision and, and a, a decision that we think is in the best interest of that particular student at the time.
Thank you. Any other discussion of this item? Okay. Um, thank you very much for that. Um, all in favor that item number four has been, uh, received and complied with?
Aye.
Okay. Opposed? So moved.
Move to take item five.
Second.
Motion's been made in second to take up item number five off the table for discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. This is an order introduced by myself on August fifth, that the Joint Committee on the City Council and School Committee review its school leadership, the final school budget for FY twenty-six and the final appropriations from the state. Committee should also review expected state and federal grants to be received during the fiscal year. So what I wanted, why I filed this order is sort of a follow-up to our last discussion. In the budget work group from March that we had come up with, there's a number of estimates that are in here as to what we thought. And I wanted to find out, now that the state approved their budget, what, can we get a copy of what all the final numbers were for, um, you know, all these different lines that were in here? And I'd like to see sort of the final, final, like what did we end up getting? And were there any other changes? Like for example, speaking of transportation, one of the items that we talked about in the work group was we had traditionally gotten approximately eighty percent funding for McKinney Vento. But there was an appropriate, there was a move afoot to reduce that down to like thirty-five to fifty percent. Where did that end up landing? Um, did we end up getting the eighty percent in the end? Or did they end up reducing it? Um, I'd love to hear, if we could get one, some sort of report on that. And then, um, I'll stop there. If there's anything noteworthy you'd want to go over. And then I wanted to talk about federal grants for a moment. Thank you.
Um, so we did, unfortunately, um, when, when the, when the school department was called for their budget hearing, we provided a balanced budget to the city council. So I will ask, uh, I mean, we can send you that presentation because it was given to every school, every, uh, city council member. And we prepared the big budget book. It's like a hundred and forty pages. It has information on grants. It has all the final numbers. Since tho- those numbers were based on the senate numbers. And you're right in that, you know, the budget process in the state, it goes house, senate, conference committee, and then final. Um, we have not adjusted our appropriation to the final numbers yet. It is something that, uh, I'm going to be working with our school committee, with our finance team and the city auditor to adjust. But we did receive, you know, a reduction in, um, charter reimbursement funds and an increase in our school choice fund. So that, that just means, uh, overall our appropriation is going to be going down from, from what we finalized. Um, and, you know, I, you know, one of the things that I have to do is, is present that information to the school committee before we come to the city council to adjust those numbers. Um, but I'd be happy to provide the presentation that we did when we came in and.
No, I have that.
Oh, you have that?
I already have that. Yeah. No, what I'm saying is that wasn't final though. That's my, that's sort of the, the whole point of this exercise is, maybe I'm being unclear. What you provided to the city, very good. And you gave a lot of line of sight as to where you saw the budget. And that was used to formulate what went ultimately in the budget. The problem is those weren't the final numbers.
Right.
Those were your best estimate as to what you believe the numbers to be as sort of where this was in the process. But what I'm asking for is what is the final, final that everything got approved in Boston and where are we? And that's what I would like the council and, I'm, hopefully the mayor has had it perhaps, and the school committee to have that final package. And then how does that compare to, I think it's page thirty in our budget packets, which is what we actually voted on in June? So, you know, if you could send us that and you're, and then what, maybe we can put that on a future joint committee agenda? And is there any red flags that like the numbers are quite a bit off? Is it, are we talking it's five hundred thousand or less? Or are we talking north of a million dollars off from, if you have, if you have these?
Yeah, we, uh, we saw a reduction in our charter reimbursement of sixty-seven thousand, which reduces our appropriation.
All right.
And then we saw, um, uh, a reduction in the charter transportation assessment of about two hundred and ninety-five thousand. So with those numbers essentially are approp-, you know, that's three hundred and sixty-three thousand, one forty-nine is the difference.
Okay.
Um, so I have a, you know, I do have, uh, you know, I, I do have those final numbers and we have been in contact with the city auditor about when, when we're going to make those official adjustments. Um, and, you know, we got to work with the, the school committee and the finance subcommittee of the school committee as well, uh, to provide that information and then come back to the council, um, to adjust those numbers.
Okay, very good.
They were, they were pretty close. So this happens every year, like chapter seventy doesn't change. Net school spending doesn't change. Foundation budget doesn't change. What changes is, uh, normally your assessments. And when I say assessments is, um, part of our general fund budget is what we have to budget for what we're going to eventually have to give the charter schools. And, um, initially during the budget process, they estimate how many kids are going to be, you know, uh, what that assessment is going to be. And every, like, I want to. And every, like, I wanna say three times during the year, they actually go and count how many of the kids are, and then they update those numbers, and then it has an impact on our appropriation, so. Um, that, that's, tho- those are really the only numbers that change, and it, it's usually not a very material amount, and I know, you know, three hundred and sixty-three thousand is, sounds like a lot, right? But it's three hundred and sixty-three thousand out of a, you know, a hundred and twenty-three million dollar budget.
Right. Okay, um, the next thing I wanted to ask is, wha- what, maybe, if you know, or if Sean knows, what's the overall amount of federal funds that you receive? Approximately?
Yeah, so uh approximately nine million.
Okay.
So, um.
What are the main, overall, like, some of the bigger components?
Title one is like around five mi- five point two million. Um, and I think the, you know, if you have that budget book, uh Counselor Jordan, it would be on page one oh five, so.
Page one oh five.
You all have the, the, page one oh five has a summary of all of our grants.
Oh, good, okay.
And, and I'm just reading numbers off of that page, so.
Sure.
We have uh an estimated, you know, nine point one million dollars in federal grants, mainly being title one, um, and then the other one is IDEA, which is uh the Individuals uh Disabilities Education Act, so it's, it's basically a s- a supplement to help support um special education. Uh, that's about two million dollars, and then we have some smaller federal grants.
Okay. Um, the reason I also wanted to examine that is, one of the things that I'm concerned about, and I already have an item sitting in DGNR, is, you know, recently, luckily, hopefully, things are improving here, but um, I was very concerned about Hoyoke being named as one of these fifteen sanctuary cities recently uh at the end of May, and one of the threats that comes with that, complicit with that, is that they're going to take away or threaten our federal aid. And I'm trying to gauge what is the potential exposure to the city, and, you know, a loss of nine million dollars is, would be extremely material. Catastrophic to the schools, I, we just could not sustain that, so. One, I want us to be not on that list, and the good news, since I filed that resolution, is they retracted that list and have now come out with a new list, and Hoyoke is not on the new list, right now in Massachusetts, only Boston is on that list. They say this is their initial list, and this is, so they came out with an initial group of thirty communities that they're going to really zero in and, and target for uh extensive enforcement actions. And so I'm pleased that Hoyoke is now not on that list at least, and I wanna keep it that way. Um, one, because the mayor is correct, we are not a sanctuary city, he has stated that, and we have ordinances against Hoyoke being a sanctuary city, so we are not a sanctuary city. And um I wanna make sure we don't get wrapped up in that.
Yeah.
Um, whatever anybody feels and has their personal opinions about immigration policy or any of that, as far as it's unfair and it's not true to have the federal government labeling Hoyoke a sanctuary city when we are not, and threatening Hoyoke uh with potential enforcement action uh of our federal funds, and that's what I'm concerned as, obviously, as somebody who works with others to balance the budget, and it's, the police department gets significant amount of money every year, the fire department, your department's one of the biggest, though. Um, so, we'll see, you know, it's certainly a situation where we're monitoring uh that, and I'm certainly monitoring that, so, um, this gives me a good line of sight as to the potential impact, and uh we'll, we'll continue to, to see where that goes. So, um, did anybody else wanna talk about state, uh, Counselor Murphy Ramboletti?
Thank you, and just in a similar vein, um, you know, I know that there have been um attempts to dismantle the Department of Education as well, and so um hopefully that's also something that doesn't come to fruition, because I would imagine that would completely negatively impact our city and a lot of other cities as well, so I think it's good to bring those things up, because federal politics does eventually trickle down to our city, so thank you all for remaining vigilant.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Willahen?
Thank you, real quick, thank you, yeah, the um Finance Committee and the full committee, um, we get a list of our, list of grants that are coming in, and a list of gifts um that have to be approved, reviewed, reviewed and um, uh, approved, basically, so. So the city coun-, so the um School Committee is, is aware of um, um, the grants coming in, thank you.
Great, perfect.
Complied with?
I think so, yeah.
Motion that item five has been complied with?
So moved. Okay, and no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Uh, item number six, a motion to take that off the table?
Second, or so moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item number six is a communication from Superintendent Soto. It's uh regarding the MedCaf Working Group, and this came to us in April first, twenty twenty-five. And uh let's see here, in your packets, uh members, we have um a communication from Mr. Soto where he lays out with some detail, and I believe, no, we actually have not spoken about this yet, cause this came in after our last meeting. Um, four different items are relative to um the MedCaf Working Group. So uh in this communication, I'll try and hit the wave tops here, he says, uh, he's thanks the, that committee for serving on the future use of the MedCaf Working Group. He said that um, they have, uh, he has discussed their recommendations with the school committee and district leaders, and he's offered a response to each of the different recommendations. Um, there were four outlined recommendations, one was relocate the Opportunity Academy to Joseph MedCaf School for the twenty-five, twenty-six year, he states in it that he supports that recommendation. Uh, recommendation number two, establish an alternative program at MedCaf with a pilot to begin in August of twenty twenty-five. Hold at least one community meeting at the Joseph MedCaf School to outline any changes in facility use for the fall of twenty-five, and he stated that he supports also this recommendation, subject to further discussion and planning with the school committee and district leaders. The third recommendation was that um the school department explore the relocation of the central office to vacant space at the Hoyokai Dean Campus with a schematic design developed by October first. In conjunction with the possible relocation of the central office, explore space at the city hall and/or annex to relocate the enrollment center. He stated in here that this recommendation requires further discussion with the school committee and the mayor. Uh, recommendation number four was that make no changes to the location of the transition program for the upcoming school year unless current landlord refuses to renew the lease. In addition, dis- direct district officials to complete the following tasks. One, develop a schematic design for the transition program to be co-located at Dean. Two, research alternative rental locations for the transitional program and solicit rental proposals. Mr. Soto stated that he supported that recommendation. So we have this communication uh which came uh out and about, and it was referred to us um for Mr. Soto, if he'd like to expand on, this obviously came out about four months ago. Uh, do you have any additional thoughts that you would like to share about these different four points? And where things stand today?
Yeah, I mean, um, thank you, uh, so Opportunity Academy is moving to, um, if you've seen the signs.
So that happened.
That, that happened, um, they're geared up and excited and ready, they have a gym, they have a cafeteria, they have ample parking space, all of the things that the other space was a li- little limited on. So staff are, are really excited about that change. Um, the school committee uh did, one of the other recommendations that was in there that I didn't hear you talk about was um establishing a middle school alternative program for Joseph Metcalf. Um, and.
I don't see that in this letter, but.
Okay, yeah, so the, I, I guess, I'm not sure why it's not on that letter, but that was one of the recommendations that that group made to me. Um, and we did a, uh, have conversations with the school committee about uh, uh, expanding um Opportunity Academies to uh support students that may not be overaged and undercredited, and uh the school committee did approve us to do that. Uh, we don't anticipate starting the year with students, um, that's gonna be through like a referral process, we're gonna start the school year, kids are gonna be where they are, and if there's referrals to this new program, um, we'll, we'll, you know, we have staff to support them and they'll be located at Opportunity Academies. Um, relative to the transitions program, um, one of the things that that move allowed us to do from the existing uh, from the previous Opportunity Academy location down at the bus station was to actually explore that as a location for our transitions program. And um in doing so, we're able to eliminate the current lease that we have, uh, where the transitions program, so. We had uh, we had students go take a look at that space, we had staff go take a look at that space. We worked with HCC, who is, you know, on paper, the, the landlord for that agreement. Um, and it's a perfect space for the transition program, it keeps them downtown right on the bus route, which is where they wanted to be, and the main pushback of moving the transition program to Dean was that um, these students are eighteen to twenty-two years old, and you're trying to support them to be independent, you know, learn how to cook for themselves, wash their clothes, and putting them in a school, uh, a lot of the families felt that that was a setback to their development. Um, so the, this location isn't a school, it's right downtown, so. Our plans is to start the school year with the transitions program being uh where the previous Opportunity Academy is, we still under lease with um at Open Square, uh, and that's up until November, but uh we have enough time now to, you know, make that move happen, let the current landlord know that we, we don't plan on renewing the lease, um, so that.
Creates a savings.
Creates a savings, yeah.
Yeah, that's great.
Um, and, and that, that's the update that I have.
Excellent, alright, anybody like to, anything further on that item? Okay, thank you for that very thoughtful and detailed explanation, um, I think this item has.
Motion that item six has been complied with?
Yep. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved, alright, moving right along.
Second.
Motion's been made, it's second to take item seven off the table, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item seven is a communication, uh, May sixth, twenty twenty-five from Desi, the interim commissioner, Pat Tuilik, uh, Tutwiler. Uh, the final cover memo for HPS exit assurances in English and in Spanish. Um, maybe we could even take up item eight with it, I think, that's a related item. So, motion to take up item number eight too?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item number eight is a further communication from Desi, this is the final exit assurances Hoyoke, um, and this uh was dated April twentieth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, Mr. Superintendent, would you be kind enough to kinda give us a overview of these two items? Um, and where we're at with these, or what takeaways you would like us to have relative to these items, please? And the, around the turnaround plan and the, the supplemental memo?
Yeah, um, so, part of the uh receivership statute gives the commissioner the authority to um remove receivership status from a district and um have some sort of exit assurances. Um, and the commissioner decided to put these exit assurances in place for a period of twelve, uh, two years.
Two years.
So uh the exit assurances are good for two years. Um, and essentially the exit assurances name some things that the commissioner is on the condi-, you know, we're out of receivership, but like, I wanna make sure that we maintain some of these things in place. Um, there's language in there that references, you know, making sure that uh the district is committed to the strategic priorities or the initiatives outlined in the um, in the uh, in the turnaround plan, which is basically high-quality instruction for all, supporting all students, continuing to focus on our early literacy uh initiative and improving student outcomes, and then uh supporting a compensation model that, that a component of the compensation model has uh performance, um, some districts you go to, uh, you know, you stay in that district, you move up a step in the ladder, whether uh it's, it's not based on performance, so one of the key things that the commissioner wanted to maintain is that a component of the compensation model has to include, uh, it doesn't have to be the entire thing, but it has to include some sort of performance, those of you that um have jobs in the private industry know that you get an evaluation and your evaluation dic- dictates whether or not.
Just had mine last week, yeah.
Yeah, so um, you know, uh, so that, that is something that is in place with the exit assurances. Um, and then there's, there's other things in there, not, um, not necessarily, uh, y- you know, I, I know some of this stuff, we're, you know, we're currently in the middle of collective bargaining with teachers um with the, the HTA, so, um, there's definitely.
And by the way, if I may, just on that thought, there was some hubbub in the news, I saw some camera crews out at some of the schools, some people were being very vocal, can you touch on the issues at stake there, there's some question about the state is still, or at least perhaps the allegation is, that is retaining certain powers relative to collective bargaining and not turning those components maybe over to the school committee yet, or how things used to be done? Ki- what's, just for the benefit of the public, so we understand the issues at play there, wh- what's the discussion revolving around there, just so we're clear as to, the, the, they seem to be concerned, or there's this concern being raised by some school teacher saying they cannot directly, or there needs these, these additional approvals from Boston or something of this nature?
Yeah, I think the, the concern is that the exit assurances, um, if read through, um, can, can create that perception, I guess, that
Okay.
that there's no collective bargaining power, but I, I'm, you know, we, school committee, uh superintendent and the district are aligned in our belief that, you know, the Hoyoke teachers deserve a fair and equitable contract, and we're excited to continue to work with them and, and collective bargaining, and hopefully come to a mutual agreement that, uh, you know, like, like all collective bargaining, like, there's some give and there's some take.
Sure.
You know, it's not like, hey, this is, you know, this is what we want and everybody gets everything that they want, like, that's just not how collective bargaining works. We, you know, there's definitely some back and forth, and we're, we're all committed to working together to do that. Um, I think there's, you know, there's language in the exit assurances that talks about the schedule remaining uh the same, and that any changes to the schedule would have to be approved by the superintendent. Um, so, uh, I'm not, you know, I'm not exactly sure what pieces of the exit assurances are most concerning, but I do know that there's enough, um, there's enough, uh, we are gonna continue to negotiate, and we hope to come to a, a, something that, you know, benefits The the teachers for sure and and mo- you know, and and the students, so. Um, to s- I I will say, and I want to acknowledge that like, we've had three. Three contracts during receivership and um as part of that process. It's not like, like we did have, we did have a negotiation, you know, it was called. Impact bargaining, but it was very much a negotiation. Uh, the turnaround kind of put some bumpers on like, these things have to be in place. But even even the bumpers that were in the initial turnaround plan. Which required an eight-hour day for staff and a.
Hmm.
Seven and a half hour day for students. Over time. Through the negotiation process, we listened. Um, and we've made significant adjustments, like when receivership first started. Uh, teachers were working an eight-hour day and like, uh, now we've gotten that down to like seven point two. Five hours, I think. Um, and students were going a seven and a half hour day. And now it's about six point seven five um hours and and we, that happened through the collective bargaining process, so. I, you know, I know there's a narrative out there that there there hasn't been negotiations and. I really uh think that takes away from a lot of the good work that, you know, previous union leadership engaged in with district leadership to come to. Compromise with, you know, and 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 come to an agreement with uh where the collective bargaining is today. Um, but again, we remain committed um and aligned. Uh, in our belief that, you know, teachers deserve a fair and equitable contract and we hope that. This, as this process plays out, we we get there.
Well, we appreciate you saying that because, you know, we definitely need good teachers and we need them to be receiving. Uh, market competitive, fair wages. So the question is, um, have we done those kind of reviews to make sure that we're paying fairly? Like, is our district competitive versus other districts and are we paying the teachers fairly in your opinion and? And is this something that the the school committee and yourself under leadership are gonna be? Meeting with them and discussing over the next year?
I mean, we've done that every, every time we've had a collective bargaining agreement. There's market research that's done. Looking at surrounding communities, um, and.
How are we doing?
Um, you know, it it depends on the community, right? Like, uh.
Well, like Holyoke, Springfield, like.
Yeah.
Hampden County, like how are we doing here in Hampden County?
It's comparable at different levels in the in the colle- in the collective bargaining, right? So.
Okay.
Uh, when I first got here back in twenty sixteen, the starting salary for a teacher was thirty-eight thousand dollars. And uh, that sits today at about fifty-one thousand dollars. Or fif- fifty-one or fifty-two. So there, you know, the last contract that we had was on average, uh, you know, a ten percent increase. Uh, to to the to the scale, so um. To the, you know, to the average teacher salary. Um, you know, where? If you look at like, at the beginning of the scale. If we're competitive with other communities, at the middle of the scale and at the top of the scale, that's where things may be a little different. Um, in comparison to surrounding communities, but. Um, I don't, I don't believe based on the information that I know that we're like way out of whack with. You know, with sadly in Chickaby and and other communities, we're we're. In that realm. I think the one, the one um district that's hard to compete with is the empowerment zone in Springfield. Um, they, so Springfield has seventy schools and there's. A portion of their schools, most of their middle schools are in kind of like receivership, but it's called the empowerment zone. They have a separate board. And uh, they negotiated a separate contract from the rest of the district. And but but it also comes with a significant amount of, their their schedules are different as well. Um, that that's one that I would say is is tough to compete with, uh, the empowerment zone in Springfield, but. When you look at other communities uh in this region, you know, in this region, um. You know, I it is, I would never say that. You know, it's enough or that it's a lot. I think that. Teachers have a very hard job and they deserve everything that they they get, um. And, you know, I wish we could, we had unlimited resources and.
Right.
And in this country as as a whole, I think that, you know, I wish we could uh. Teachers could get paid more, um. Community, I mean, we're we're, we have, uh, there's a balance between, you know, um, what we have in the budget and what we can afford and. Um, I think that, again, I remain committed to work with the school committee and with the H T A and hopefully we can come to.
How's our retention rate compared to other, uh, these other surrounding communities here in Hampden County?
We saw about a six-point increase last year, so I think we went up to seventy-six percent um from. Or maybe it was four points. So we were at, Aaron, do you, do you remember? Um.
Just make sure you're.
Yeah, your microphone.
Let me look it up, but their average since the pandemic is four points higher than it was pre-pandemic. And the average this past year was like seventy-eight point five percent. I'll check, but. That was the highest it's been except for in the pandemic when people. Weren't leaving their jobs and that was just a couple points lower than it was pre-receivership.
How does that compare to the rest of Hampden County?
It's one of the lower, lower ones.
So that's indicative of, you know, cause one of the concerns is. It's not easy to be a teacher in the Holyoke Public Schools. And even if I'm getting the same pay as Chickaby or. Westfield or Eastline Meadow or fill in the blank, I have to do a lot more. It's it's cha- it's a lot more challenging. There's. A lot of issues of poverty and. Social determinants of education that I have to deal with, that I don't have to deal with in these more affluent districts. And so that causes more burnout, that causes, you know, all these. So I'm just wondering, how are we? If we know we have a retention issue, should we be paying ten percent more than the other areas to compete to say? Yeah, you gotta do more in Holyoke, but you're also gonna get paid more. Like, there's something to offset that extra. And um. Cause I, I mean, I think these people do saintly work, you know, it's just incredible what they're doing. And so. I don't know, i- i- is there an approach that we can do to kind of offset that? Cause that's kind of the. Critique, if you will, is even parity is not parity when, you know, these are, I'd be interested in your thoughts on that.
Yeah, I think, um, you know, you, you said it all, right? Like, it's it's not a. Uh, easy.
Not for the faint of heart.
Community to work in, um, but, you know, I I commend all of our teachers. They do. An amazing job. I think that whenever teachers go to other communities, they they love to say, oh, you worked in Holyoke? Like, they they know. You know, what you're made of if if you you're working um in Holyoke. Uh, in terms of, you know. In in amount and increase, like, we're we're kind of bound by our budget, right? We're funded at the minimum net school spending requirement. Um, so, you know, unlike other communities that that fund way above the. Minimum net school spending, sometimes they develop a budget. And depending on how the negotiations go, they just tell the city council, like, this is what we need and. It either gets funded or not. I don't, you know, but what like, the the way we develop our budget is this is the minimum number and how do we build up to it? So any like drastic, you you mentioned like. Jump, you know, increasing salaries, let's say twenty percent. If we were to do something like that, it would have to be at. Uh, either requesting more money from the city or uh making reductions in the budget. That that may have an impact on class sizes, that may have an impact on. Different services, that may have an impact on on a lot of the things. So like, you know, when when I first got here. That's kind of the the situation we were in. We were trying to close four million dollar gaps every single year. And it wasn't, uh, the, we didn't solve those gaps by coming to the city and asking for more money. We solved them through cutting. And our main focus was to try to make reductions outside of the classroom. Like, whenever, whenever we approach a budget deficit. We try to approach it in a way that has minimal impact in the classroom. Um, because we've had the Student Opportunity Act and we had. These federal Esser dollars, we've been able to do more. I I mentioned to you the last time we.
Yep.
Uh, the last uh teacher contract that we had was an average ten percent increase. I don't think. You know, I can't recall a time in Holyoke where where we were able to do that, right? Um, but now as Esser is going away. And we're getting into final implementation of Student Opportunity Act, we eventually, we're gonna get to that point where. Revenue is stagnant and expenses continue to rise, so. We need to make sure that uh whatever we do is sustainable and that uh it has. Uh, as minimal of an impact to the, you know, to the classroom as possible and you gotta think long term too, right?
Um, well, the the, and again, therein lies the problem in that Holyoke is broke, right? We have no money. We're, we're barely able scraping by, cause we're based on a property tax system when. I mean, I could go on all night about the dynamic of property taxes in this town and where we're going with it. Um, we are. We have the highest property tax burden compared to income in in the state, one of the absolute highest. Right? So that is when you take the average residential tax bill compared to the average wages or. Social security of what people are actually receiving to live on, it's an undis- was dramatically disproportionate amount to these more affluent communities. So what I'm suggesting is, while the state is patting themselves on the back, talking about. New millionaires taxes and all this money that's gonna be dedicated. Uh, to education, they're raising in all these extra billions. My point is, those dollars. It's nice to brag about free H C C or free stick and all these other things. That's great. But what about the commitment to the gateway cities that are chronically underfunded? Which are not getting the resources that we need for these things. You can't say. You know, this was one of my main beefs with receivership is they never provided any actual real extra money. And that, because they'll say. Anthony, go in and see the city council who's broke and see if you can get more money for teachers out of them. When they're sitting down there with hundreds of millions, billions sitting in reserves, right? Tens of billions in reserves in some instances. Uh, some years they've had amazing sums of money. And where where are those dollars, right? Well, I'm down here begging, we've passed resolutions unanimously here trying to get. Could we get four million dollars? You're on billions extra in their rainy day accounts. Can we get, could we get four million? Could we get five million, right? Even our appropriation to the schools this year had to went up again, right? So dramatically. And now you're gonna be seeing us for three hundred and sixty-three thousand that they didn't want to fund you for. So now we gotta find it locally, right? That's three sixty-three that they should be paying you, but we're gonna have to come up with that somewhere, right? So this is the point. It's really extracting from the poorest community when they're so. Well-to-do and have all this money and it's not making its way into the gateway communities. Um, and I could provide example after example of this. This is part of the frustration is. They're the people that need to be giving us the money to, so that when these things are identified. Like the teachers need more additional funds. They're the obvious source of it, right? That that's where the money should come from. I can't ask. Joe Schmo, oh, we're going up ten more dollars or twenty more dollars on your rent. So that, you know, we can get more property taxes. It's it's just unbelievable. Uh, Aaron?
Councilor Jordan, one differentiating factor to go back to that question in Holyoke Public Schools that. Um, to add on to something Anthony said is our teacher induction program and mentorship program. So we do have a lot more new teachers than. The average district. And so like, right now they're in in an induction program all week. We, I saw them this afternoon practicing their teacher moves. They're gonna, they have more coaching supports in the schools than other. Districts um are able to provide and that that's one of the. Things why unfortunately other districts will ta- steal Holyoke teachers because we do such a great job of training them up and they're. Really strong classroom management and we have strong curriculum to support them. So that's one of the really good things about coming to Holyoke as a new teacher. I also misquoted, last year's retention rate was seventy-seven point two percent. I think I said seventy-eight point five.
Seventy-seven point two. Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilor Graney?
Uh, yeah, uh, Councilor Jordan stole most of my thunder, but uh. You know, when you talk about the bureaucracy and the spinning, school spinning, things like the sales tax and things like that, they were. Primarily entered into the. State budget to provide extra funding for the schools. But once the bureaucracy gets a hold of that dough, they don't send it to where it's supposed to go. We all know that. That's been a problem for many, many years. With the different bureaucracies in the state. And the only other issue besides retention that I wanted to talk about. Was retirement and uh I'm sure that the retirement uh, because we are our our, because our staff right now is. Much younger probably than it has been in the past, but I don't think retirement is much of an issue, is it?
I mean, my, the, I think the the good thing about. The school department's retirement is that we're part of the mass, you know, most of our staff are in mass teachers. So it's not part of the city's kind of retirement pension obligation, you know, those that.
Right, but you have to replace them.
What was that?
And they come in, they come in at a smaller salary than the retirement going out, so there should be some savings in the budget there too.
Yeah, we didn't see any savings in retirement um. In the appropriation that we have for retirement. What we. What we actually do have in our budget is health insurance for retired teachers.
Right.
And that's just an assessment that we get from on our cherry sheet from the state. And that's been pretty consistent from from year to year.
Right, but wha- what I'm, what I'm getting at is when you have new teachers coming in.
Yeah.
Generally, they come in at the starting salaries. And the teachers that are moving out are going in at higher salaries, so that should provide. A little savings in the school budget from year to year, I would think.
Yeah, we actually include that in in our assumptions when we build our budget. We build in some attrition. I call that attrition. Um, and some lapped salaries, so attrition is when you have somebody that. You know, who retires and you bring somebody in at the lower end. We build in some assumptions into our budget. And then we also build in assumptions on um. You know, we we're assuming we're fully staffed and and that's. That's rarely the case that like every single vacancy is filled. So we build in some assumptions rather than like. Assume, hey, we're gonna have, you know, everybody that we have this year, next year, and we're gonna, and all of our vacancies are gonna be filled. We know that realistically that's not true, so we build those assumptions instead of cutting positions. And then uh, monthly, uh, Sean, Mr. Mangano and his team. Do uh regular payroll projections to see where we're at relative to what we budgeted and whether or not adjustments need to be made.
Okay, how about the two percentages, special ed and special ed funding from the state? What's the gap?
Can you repeat the question, please?
Yeah, the difference in the gap between our special ed student, the number of special ed students. And the needs for special ed and the special ed funding coming from the state.
Yeah.
How underfunded are we?
That gap is uh, pretty significant. Um. I don't have a number off the top of my head.
Approximately.
Um, I'd say about. Four to five million. And, you know, I have a calculation in the budget book. I don't know what page it is, but. You know, the, they make an assumption of how many students you have. Um. It's just a percentage of your total.
Right.
They don't actually say, oh, Holyoke has thirty percent of their students on I P, so we'll give them. That share. They just say. A percentage of your total enrollment, we're gonna give you funding for that. And then for out of district, the same thing. And then when you factor. What we get in the general fund budget for special education. What we get on that I D E A grant and what we get in circuit breaker revenue. Therein lies that and and compare it to what we're actually spending in those categories. Therein lies that gap of about four, four to five million.
The same formula that the state's been using for years.
They've recently changed it, so um they didn't make a significant dent in the special education portion of it. Uh, essentially the Student Opportunity Act is giving. Communities that have uh students that are economically disadvantaged. Um, a a higher, a higher per student allocation for those students. That's where we. That's where we benefited greatly as part of the Student Opportunity Act. Is uh, is the change that they made in the formula to that. Um, you know, and they they did it, they're phasing it in over a six-year period, so we got one more. period. So we got one more year of, uh, Student Opportunity Act increases and then it levels off. Uh, but there's still that, that gap that exists. I think, you know, I don't, I don't know that the state's gonna do much about special education funding because there's a lot of advocacy right now for, for communities that didn't benefit from, um, Student Opportunity Act, but do continue to see like significant challenges in developing their budget. Um, a lot of that is the rural communities, you know, uh, your community like Brimfield or a community like Granby, uh, you might not necessarily have a lot of students that are, are well, well, well below the poverty line. So you didn't get much Student Opportunity Act money. So those communities are screaming to the state like, hey, you took care of Holyoke, you took care of all these other communities, but how about us? We're struggling too. And I know there's a lot of advocacy at the state level with, uh, for communities like that, that do have, like, I don't want to dismiss their challenges. They have significant budget challenges, but they didn't necessarily benefit from Student Opportunity Act as much as, uh, uh, communities like Holyoke Springfield Lawrence, South Bridge.
All right, thank you.
Uh, Ron, you all, you're all set and Jay?
Thank you. Real quick. Thank you, Mrs. Soto, for your answers. Um, yeah, just back to the exit, um, assurances and, um, the, the memos here from Dessie. I just want to remind everyone that, um, the state placed three communities under receivership, okay, over the last 10 or 15 years or so. Um, Hoyoke is the first one to come out of receivership. So we're in that process. So it's a learning curve for, from, from Dessie's perspective and ours. So there's gonna be some give and take going back throughout that process. Even before we received these assurances, you know, the school committee had a, had approved their medal. We had to show Dessie that we were capable of taking back our schools. Each subcommittee chairperson had to provide bullet points to Dessie on, you know, what have you done to improve the system? What changes have you instituted to, um, to prove that you're capable of, um, taking back the, um, the schools? You know, we had to do that. Uh, each, uh, each chairperson had to do that. So again, I'm, I'm proud of our teachers. I'm proud of our principals. I'm proud of the, uh, administrators that are here, um, tonight. Um, I just think, you know, this is just the first step in the process and I just think, um, we just have to let it, um, work out. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other thoughts or comments from anyone before we wrap up? Okay. Uh, I think seven and eight could be considered complied with.
Motion that seven and eight are complied with?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Uh, motion to take item nine off the table?
Do you want to take 10 too?
Oh.
They're both packed, so I don't...
Yeah, yeah, that's a good idea. Yep.
A motion to suspend the rolls and take nine and 10 as a package?
Okay. All right, all in favor? Opposed, so moved. Okay, item number nine is a communication from Counselor Jordan. This was a communication for the joint committee agenda. Actually comes to me by way of, uh, from the school committee. Um, this is a request to discuss resource officers for the New Peck Middle School. Um, item number 10 is a communication, uh, from myself to the joint committee, uh, and school committee to review with the school leadership, the opening of the New Peck School and just a, a check-in to ensure everything is running on track. So, uh, a couple Peck School items here. Could you touch on, I think we did have, uh, Jay, keep me honest, but I know, um, I think the resource, I think we covered it, um, what your request was. So if, what's that?
I have a question.
Oh, yeah, no, no, no. I mean, just want to make sure that I got the correct issue on the table. So, um, Anthony, if you would be kind enough to talk, uh, there's interest among your school committee members about what's, uh, happening with, uh, a discussion about resource officers for the New Peck School. And then if you could just talk about the opening, uh, I know we did push back the ribbon cutting to September 2nd, which is, I think we had some weather issues.
Rained on our parade.
Yeah, rained on our parade. Um, and we're looking forward to bright sunny September 2nd and, uh, the tour and the whole...
Rain or shine, we're gonna...
Rain or shine. Well, here we come. That's it. So, uh, where are we at? What's the first day of school again also? And, uh, how are everything going, uh, so far? And you just give us an overview, starting perhaps with the resource officer issue. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll start with the resource officer and then I'll, I'll kick it over to Erin who's been very closely connected to, you know, the, the OPM and the work that's happening. I'll let her provide you with an update on the building project. But thankfully, um, you know, uh, the school committee approved, uh, as part of the budget approval and as part of the city council's approval of our budget, we did add a school resource officer. And the, the goal was to have that school resource officer be shared between both of the middle schools. So there will be a, a much, uh, bigger presence. Uh, we have a resource officer at Dean, we have a resource officer at Holyoke High, and now we're gonna have one that is gonna be, uh, you know, going between Sullivan and the New Peck School. Um, and we just had a conversation, uh, at this last school committee meeting about that as well. So I think that, you know, uh, we're, we're grateful to, um, our partnership with the Holyoke Police Department. Um, school resource officers have been amazing. They feel like a part of the, the school community and, uh, in many ways a part of the, uh, the school leadership team there. And they're there to support and build good rela- strong relationships with kids. Um, we haven't had that in the middle school, but, uh, next year we, we're, we plan on having more of a presence there, uh, to, to get that going. And then I'll, I'll kick it over to Erin to provide an update on the building project herself.
First, thanks to Mr. Collamore and Counselor Jordan for serving on our school building committee. We just had a meeting tonight at 6:00, so this is hot off the presses. Um, the Peck School will open the first day of school for students on Monday, August 25th, and the project is currently under, um, budget, which is fabulous for the city.
Yes.
Um, we received our temporary, temporary certificate of occupancy, um, on July 3rd, which enables the project team and vendors to move furniture and equipment in and, um, staff can be in there. You, we, we can actually open the school under the temporary certificate if need be. Um, right now the building commissioner and the fire department are returning next week on a few final items, um, in order to eventually receive the final certificate of occupancy. Um, there was some fire, some, there's, there's a list, but kind of two things that really stood out to me was, um, some fire caulking so that fire doesn't spread, you know, room to room if that ever, you know, unfortunately would happen. Hopefully not. And then the other piece is the fire alarm system is quieter than what the fire department i- is accustomed to in our other schools. There's some differences in code, like with the new modern fire systems and there's directions and flashing and stuff. So they're meeting next week to talk about that, seeing where we could increase the volume and audio, what else could be done. And so I think that's one of the pieces that is like the biggest sticking piece right now to get to that final occupancy. Like I said, we can still open. Um, teachers and staff have been in the building, um, but teacher's first official day is next Tuesday. And then, um, for a quick budget update, and this is just what's committed to date, but as you probably remember, the total project amount was 85.5 million. We're about 13% under budget right now. So about $10 million under budget.
Wow.
Yeah, yeah, fabulous. A big chunk of this, 8 million of it's on construction costs. There are some change orders possibly coming up or some paving and stuff. So I don't expect that we'll be quite at 10 million under, but we're being super judicious and we had some, you know, positive, you know, con- the construction trend increases weren't as high as we thought they would be. Um, so, you know, we've had some favorability there. It was, you know, a big cost savings to the district and the city, um, for us to open, do the model school project and open up this year. So even though we're liter- literally sprinting to the finish line and the facilities teams and educators are working so hard to get the building ready, it's saving us millions of dollars. So worth the rush. Um, we can't wait to celebrate with folks on September 2nd since we'll be fully moved into the building. If there's rain, we can host it in the media center auditorium. Um, we'll do a ribbon cutting at 4:15. Um, Counselor Murphy Rambeletti will be one of our speakers. So we'll interrupt, um, Superintendent Soto.
Worth, worth the price of admission.
Yes, yes. Um, one giant red ribbon and scissors. Um, and then tours from 5:00 to 6:30. It's also open house. So if someone can't be there at 5:00, they're welcome to come in and tour the building, um, too. So we're hoping for a great turnout and a fabulous celebration.
That's awesome. A great update. Uh, Howie?
Yeah, just quickly. One thing I, I, I noticed, correct me if I'm wrong, but the access road between Hoyoke High School and Peck is absolutely significantly better than it was. I mean, that is a huge, huge improvement where the kids can walk down, you know, that path and that it's, it's really significant because that was a, that was a, a real problem, uh, in the prior building, you know? And, uh, that, I, when I looked at that, I said, wow, that's great.
Yep. We certainly had a lot of...
Now you're stealing my thunder because that was something that me and, and Erin Brunel, to her credit too, she was...
That's what you get for talking so long.
Yeah, yeah. That was, uh, her and I were harping on that, that back access, uh, road. That was, it was supposed to, I think there was a number, it was either somewhere between 1.2 million and 2 million upgrade. I don't know if it ended up costing that much to do it, but to get the buses, it was a big thing for the neighborhood and that finally doing that was a huge thing. Erin, please, your, your thoughts on that?
Luckily the overall, when the project was bid, it came under, under because we were, since we were trying to keep it to that 85.5, we had to put in the dingle project as a maybe consideration. And then since it, everything came under, we, that was the first thing probably to be added. Do you want people to know that, that will be open to buses, a ton of safety stuff that Sean, Shidi and others have been working on to also make sure that it's safe for walkers, but cars will not be using that entrance and that will be closed during, um, during the school day. So the traditional like entrance for, um, families and teachers is just where it used to be. Um, so that should be familiar to folks. But yeah, it's amazing. We'll be safer, so much better visibility. We have cameras. It, it's really a terrific improvement.
Yeah, and the, the bus flow is gonna just be so much better with that and help some of the neighborhoods around Elmwood too, to keep the buses out of a lot of those smaller narrow streets. So neighbors will certainly appreciate that as well. So, yeah, that was a home run that we could get that, um, add on, added on.
Yeah. It's noteworthy to also thank Holyoke High School because it is requiring accommodations to their parking lot because both schools are starting at the same time and they're being accommodating and the schools have been working fabulously together on a safe entry plan. Um, but we just appreciate that community because it is, you know, a bit of an inconvenience for them to have the Peck buses going through their parking lot.
Yeah.
Yep, we, and we appreciate that. And just a compliment to you too, um, Erin particularly. You've done a lot of work with the building committee and, uh, uh, they have a very vibrant group and, uh, just very thorough reports, uh, meet often, go through a lot of the fine details. I've certainly enjoyed being a part of that group, um, as well as I'm sure I could speak for everybody on the committee. You've, uh, done a good job of listening to everybody and getting feedback and had a good, strong, uh, diverse group on there. So that was really, really well done. So certainly a compliment to you and your leadership, uh, in particular on this. So thank you.
Thank you. The mayor appointed the committee, I just want to note, but it's a pleasure to staff it and be a part of this. This is just a terrific accomplishment for the whole city. Thanks.
Uh, Jay?
Thank you. Yeah, yeah, I just want to thank Erin's leadership on the school building, uh, committee. I know just to have a project come in under budget is so rare. Every time I pick up the paper, I, I read about the Forbes Library in Amherst, they're, they're another 2 or 3 million dollars in the hole. So we're the opposite of that. So I just want to thank you and members of the committee. Um, just back on the topic of the school resource officers. So, Mrs. Soto, um, you said there's gonna be one school resource officer shared between Sullivan and Peck? Okay, that's good. I was just concerned because I know we had a lot of talk tonight and the past meetings that I see about, um, just the police department being understaffed and not having the bodies to, to fill some of the needs, um, in the city, traffic enforcement, speeding enforcement. And I was watching one of the meetings where the, the police chief was concerned that he didn't have enough officers to, to fund the resource, um, um, position. So that may be a little wary on where they were in terms of their numbers, um, and what our plans were going forward.
Yeah, thank you for, for bringing that up. It's actually not pulling from any of their, other officers. So, uh, we've always had, um, a school resource officer supervisor. Um, and that supervisor didn't necessarily have, you know, wasn't stationed at a school. They would supervise the other two and visit multiple schools. What we're changing next year is like, that person's gonna be stationed at, at the middle schools and they're gonna be there throughout the entire day. They're not gonna be bouncing around. Obviously if we get a call where, and this, this is true for the other resource officers, if there's an incident at another school, um, that's usually the first person we call if it's not an emergency. And they've been great about just like, all right, I'll be right over. Um, Holyoke's not huge. You can get to any school within, you know, seven minutes. So, uh, they've been really good about that.
I got, I got one.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Rosalie?
I would also like to commend Erin. Uh, what a great job she has done. Uh, we really appreciate you and also Mr. Soto. It's been an excellent superintendent. Um, we couldn't pick a better one. So just keep hanging in here and doing what you do. I love our school committee. Uh, we have a wonderful group and we work as a team. And I feel like they're my family. And you guys know my mantra, if you mess with kids, you mess with me. And so I'm, I'm running again. I'm gonna run like someone's chasing me. Uh, so the thing of it is I've been on the, the school board now for 11 years. So I want to get into the schools, work with the kids again. Um, I do, um, I'm gonna mentor the children and just kind of go in on a personal thing. Just volunteer to go in on the down low and be a blessing to them if I can. And I'm hoping that I'm a blessing to our school board. You guys, thank you so much for caring about me and loving me. Okay? Amen.
Just quickly, two things. Number one, I want to thank, uh, school committee man Collamore for his numerous years of service. He's been a stalwart in the community, a wonderful advocate for the Hoyoke Public Schools for many, many years and a mentor to many people who are on the school committee. And I want to thank him so much for his service.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, and we're looking forward to... How about that?
One other quick thing.
Sure, Howie.
How's our enrollment at Dean?
Uh, we're, we're fully enrolled at Dean. So we added about, we added about 10 seats this year.
Oh, that's super.
So, um, we're up to, I want to say 400. So every year, we, we normally would take 100 every, uh, freshman class. We bumped that number up to about 1, um, 120.
That's super because I'm sure your heart's there.
Yes, just a little bit, right? Um, but yeah, next year's gonna be the first year where Dean is kind of fully, you know, uh, if you guys remember, uh, the, the classes were smaller in previous years. That, that small class graduated this, this past year. So our senior class is gonna be close to that 100 number that we've been kind of phasing in 100 kids. So we're over 400 next year for sure.
Awesome, awesome. Great job. Well, um, I think these two items have been complied with. Don't you agree, members? So a motion to do that?
So moved.
Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. So that is the end of our agenda. So a motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
All right, motion's been made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. We stand adjourned. Thank you so much for the, a very thoughtful meeting. Have a wonderful...